As I call the order, the regular school, we're meeting of independent school district number 82. It is 6:00 PM on Monday, October 20th. Please go ahead and stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're looking for approval of this evening's tentative agenda. So moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. Now we are moving on to item number four, citizen comments. We don't have any this evening. So move right along to item number five, fiscal stability, starting with motion for our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. I'll move along to collaborative connections and I will pass it over to Superintendent Eric Olson.
All right. Good evening. We have two donations to bring forward here tonight. The Kopp Family Foundation bringing forward $1,000 for the Connect Five Transition Program and the Lions Club bringing forward $1,000 as well for middle school baseball field repairs. These are our two donations here tonight. I want to continue to thank the community for the amazing support that they give us. And now I turn it over to the resolution and Jeff Hagley.
Therefore be resolved by the Monticello School Board number 882 to gratefully accept the following donations. The Kopp Family Foundation, $1,000 for Connect Five Transitional Program and Monticello Lions Club, $1,000 for middle school baseball field repair.
Second. Moved by Jeff Hagley, seconded by Mayor Bartel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Motion passes 6-0. On to item B, recognizing the high school custodial team's exceptional efforts with Superintendent Eric Olson.
Awesome. I have a shout out here today and it's for our high school custodial staff and the person who gave me the good news was LeAnn Gores and Janine Saberson of the NWTA Summer Program, but they just said that the thank you was long overdue. But the work that Ken Retka did with the summer programming at the high school was just phenomenal. He takes care of every user group over there and just was a person that they could always count on to make things comfortable, whether it was climbing up on the roof to make sure that air conditioning was working or trying to find space for all the materials that they've been collecting for the gifted and talented summer program. That crew, both Ken Retka and the whole crew is, are just phenomenal. And she just wanted to make sure that we knew that here as a school board, that they're very grateful for the team's hard work, flexibility, support, and just wanted to share appreciation for the Monticello High School Custodial Team.
Awesome. Thank you. They are very much appreciated. All right, moving on to item seven, innovation and leadership. I would like to welcome to the podium, Monticello High School student Sam Vole to go over a basketball camp presentation.
Hello. My name is Samantha Vole. Thank you for having me tonight to share a little bit about what I did this past summer. I'm a senior at Monticello High School and I play basketball and tennis and I am a part of the Unified Club. This August, I hosted a basketball camp at the high school. It was a three-day-long camp that was broken up into hour-long sessions. The dates were August 11th through the 13th. I had three sessions each day. The first session was kindergarten and first graders, which had a total of 11 kids. The second session was third through fifth graders, which had a total of 24 kids. And the last session was sixth through eighth graders, which had a total of nine kids. What we did during camp, to start off camp, we did introductions and I asked the players to share something about themselves with a question. More like favorite part of basketball, favorite drill, et cetera. I wanted to have each kid feel acknowledged and this was a way for them to introduce themselves to me. Soon after our beginning meeting, the camp was broken up into usually four drills. Obviously, the drills were age-appropriate, but I wanted them to be competitive and for everyone to do their best. The first drill would be some sort of dribbling drill, then we would go into passing, then a shooting drill, and then at the end, it would be fun game incorporating all of it. Some examples would be red light, green light, which would be the kindergarten through first graders. And the game is, you would, I would call out red light, green light, or yellow light, and they would have to dribble down to the other side accordingly. And with the older age groups, all they love to do is four-on-four, five-on-five. That's what they beg me usually every day, so we did do that. And to wrap up each day, we would come back to the M and we would do trivia. I would give two questions about myself pertaining to basketball and I would call on the kids to answer. If they got it right, they would earn themselves a Gatorade. Then of course, we broke it down to family on two. Some of my favorite parts of camps were seeing the smiles on the kids' faces. A part I was worried about was if the kids were going to think camp was boring or not fun. So seeing joy, laugh, and smiles made me very happy. More recently, outside of basketball, seeing these kids in my everyday life just come up to me, start conversations, give me a hug, or just say hi, make my day every time. Why? I wanted to do this camp because I love basketball and love sharing my love for the game with others, especially younger players. When I was young in the program, I looked up to high school players that were helping at camps. I wanted to provide the same acknowledgement and encouragement I remembered feeling. Where is the money going? The money is going to a future scholarship through the girls' basketball high school program. The total amount raised was $3,850. Community education took 30%. The T-shirt cost was $351 and the total funds left to go into the scholarship was $2,450. My goal is to continue this camp and to keep giving back to our basketball program and community that has given so much to me. What did I learn? Running this camp gave me a sense of ownership because my name was attached to it. Taking ownership and leading the camp pushed me to grow as a leader. Seeing the kids learn, have fun, and get inspired gave me so much pride and satisfaction. Who helped? There were several people who helped me along the way. Coach Kudrowski and Coach Guyen helped me with the basketball flyer and promotion. My mom, Aunt Christie, and their friend Shelley volunteered their time to be my assistants. I want to thank Mr. Olson for asking me to share my story with you. Thank you.
Samantha, real quick, I have a question for you.
Oh yeah, you have to stay up there.
Sorry. This is absolutely fantastic. What an impact you're making on the youth and the future of basketball, which is great. So I see you did it this August. Do you have plans to do any more camps? Because I'm assuming these kids have probably talked to their friends and are going to want to do it again.
Yeah, I am planning to try to do it every August when I come back from school.
Okay, great. And will you continue to run through community education like you did for registration? Will you do it separately?
Um, the plan is community education, I'm pretty sure, but yeah.
Great. Board members, what other questions do we have for Samantha?
How many, what was the total number of kids that attended?
Um, total? I think it was around 45. I'm pretty sure. Some ages, like the older age group had some kids, more kids one day, more kids less because of like, I think football was going on that week too. So I think around 45.
It's pretty neat that when I saw that you donated that, I just think the full circle-ness of this story and hearing how you came through the system, you had your heroes, and now you're a hero. And you have, you learned that. And I know you won't forget it. We're really, really proud of you.
Yeah, thank you for serving our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, you can go sit down.
If I was up there, they would have been a lot harder on me. You did awesome, Sam.
All right, and I feel bad for everyone that needs to follow her up. So, next is item number eight, teaching and learning. We will invite to the podium our Director of Community Education, Jeremiah Mack, and his team to go over community education goal updates.
All right. Well, thank you. We have most everybody here today. We have one on vacation. Everybody else is here. So as like I said, I'm Jeremiah Mack, Community Ed Director. We'll let everybody else kind of introduce to themselves. We'll start with our newest member, Parker.
Hi, Parker Claire, Activities and Recreation Coordinator.
Jen Johnson, Early Learning Coordinator.
Andrea Greenwald, Magic Adventures Coordinator.
I'm Stephanie Jude. I am the Enrichment and Marketing Coordinator.
Ryan Seidel, Fine Arts Coordinator.
All right. Just want to give an update since we were here in the spring, kind of like summer and fall. Overall, just a reminder what our program goals are. Just a reminder, we are a part of the district that serves all 24,500 residents in Monticello School District. And to get them into the schools, get our schools accessible to our community, make this, try to make the schools the center of our community. And obviously, our programming ebbs and flows based on what community need and demand is on a yearly basis. These are all of our program areas. We'll talk, touch on all of these today. Everybody will have a little say on what has gone on since last time we were here. And we'll start with early ed.
All right. So first, I'm going to touch on some of our summer programs from this, from this summer. So for ECFE, we offered one-day, two-day, and weekly sessions throughout the summer. Our most popular, we partnered this summer with the local library. And so we had success of having story time there. We did a pop-in and play on Wednesdays. So we had lots of families coming in, checking out the gym and our outdoor spaces. And then we had a variety of one-day themed classes. And then for special events, from last spring, we had family fun out at the Bertram Park. And then this fall, we had our annual Big Wheels event. And that was amazing because the kids loved seeing all the vehicles, but I think their favorite was having the helicopter fly in. So, so thanks to all our community partners who came and were a vendor at that event. And then throughout all these events and our classes, we've had over 600 participants. And then new this fall, we decided, because we, to offer year-round signup. Typically, we just did semester-to-semester signups. And so that was something new that we decided to do because we had, we were hearing from our families that they would like to sign up for classes for the whole year instead of just each semester. So. And then the most popular ones for this fall have been our nature classes and our mixed ages. And then this, also in the summer, we did offer a summer preschool program, which was main, having students who were going into kindergarten to either maintain or enhance their skills. And then the next slide. This fall for school readiness, we're serving currently 237. And I know that's going up because I had a few more registrations coming in this past week. If we click on the link there, I know you were curious about how we, how our tuition looks compared to other area schools. And you can see, we have some of the highest rates compared to other communities. So that's how our tuition looks. Yeah, so the red is most of ours. I think the only one that we were the lowest was at one of the half-day ones. I think.
Like a four-day.
Yeah, with a four-day one. And then for screening, last year, we served 260 children. And already in the last three months, we've already done 110 kids, ages three to five. So that's been a lot of, lot of screenings to process. So kudos to Tanya Larson. She does all of those. She's amazing getting all of those done. And then Rally to Read, because we also partner with that. And with the Imagination Library, we already have 245. And we just started those registrations this early summer. And so I think that's exciting that we're getting books into kids ages zero to four within our community. Each month, they get a new book. So I think that's pretty awesome. And again, I just want to say thanks to the community for voting us the number one preschool in our area.
I have a question for you real quick. So when you were looking, when you, we had the rates up there and were the higher, how do we compare in terms of how many classes we offer in our community compared to some of those other communities? Do you know? Do you know more?
If you look on the chart, it shows all the different options that most people have in the area. So obviously, some have full day, a lot of, almost everybody has half-day. Just kind of depends on what they have for available space as well and their community needs.
You know, roughly how many kids or how many classes that they're?
We have, we run 10 different classrooms. So like for half-days, Tuesday, Thursday, we only have one section of half, two to half-days. Three half-days, we have two sections. Two full-days and three full-days, we have two sections. Three, five full-days, we have four sections. And nature-based, we, they combine between their half-day and full-day. They're in one big classroom, but the kids are split into, within, they're all housed within the same classroom. They just come for partial day and full day. And we cap out at 25 maximum kids. No more than 20 full-day.
So just for clarification, the numbers underneath the two half-days, those are the numbers of students in each of?
No, that's the cost per month.
Okay.
This is just the money. So I guess my question is like, not to create more work, and it's not necessary. I was just wondering if like, we knew how many, like OCEO, how many classes do they have of the four half-days or three half-days? Like, how's their enrollment for those areas, I guess is a better way to ask.
Well, like at OCEO-type schools, they pretty much have an option at all their elementary schools for the most part because they're in, so it's based on their space availability. Elk River, they have some option, they have about, they have more options than we do because they have options in Elk River, at Hanky, and they have options in Rogers and Zimmerman for classes. So they have quite a range of spaces. If you're looking at St. Michael, they're offering eight to 10 different options. You know, either like, this half-day is one option, this is a different option. So that'd be like one, two. And then I just, we'd have to ask how many different students they have in each option. So, because each option, even no matter where they go, is capped at 20 maximum.
Are we losing kids to any programs? Maybe that's?
I mean, the competition in town would be if they're going to Playhouse, whatever, formal, whatever Playhouse's name is. There's a few, you know, there's some students at Pumpkin Patch that does half-day. There's Swan River also does have, does have full-day preschool as well. So. And then obviously, you have in-home daycare or families are taking to other center-based, based on their employer, they're closer to their work. So that's New Horizons, that's Primrose, if that's, you know, any other option, there's a daycare option as well.
I remember it was 237, the number of participants. And is that three and four-year-olds then?
And that's me, most of those are fours.
So then if you look at that as comparison to a graduating class, you would hope that, you know, if we were getting people into our programs and, you know, each class, you would hope be around 300.
Yeah, because we're about 60% of our students come to our preschool program that are, that then are in our kindergarten class. So out of the 240 kindergartners, about 60% of those were in Monticello preschool. The other 40% either at home, moved to town, or went to different options.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Andrea. Thanks for having us today. I keep thinking about Sam's presentation and I need to figure out a way to hire her. Currently, this school year, we are serving 335 students. We have 56 amazing staff members on our team. And as of right now, we're serving about 15 more students this year as compared to last year. It's always something I look at. We do have about 20 on the waiting list right now. I got it closer to 15 and a couple more people have registered again. So that's always on my radar, constantly trying to hire more to be able to add more kids into the program. I looked back at our numbers three years ago before the school times changed, and we had about 60 kids on the waiting list. So my work with Superintendent Olson and Ms. Chido at the high school has really helped with our youth service, starting that youth service program and getting those high schoolers in the door. And I think I have about five high schoolers that can come at 2 o'clock or before and work with our kids. So that really helps me to be able to get more kids into the program. And I know that's always a question that you guys ask. So I wanted to talk about that a little bit. This past summer, we were at Eastview and at Little Mountain, and we served 285 students. And we had 30 more as compared to last summer. And we went on 37 fun field trips between both sites. We always try something new every year and just to get some more ideas and, and make sure it's fun and exciting for the kids every year. One of the pictures up there, I thought was really cute to highlight. There's a couple kids that wanted to be junior staff that day. And so they were making walkie-talkies out of construction paper and little badges. And I just was like, that is, the school board needs to see that. That's really cute. And then this summer, the only difference, I guess, from when we were here in April to now is we had to, there was a budget code change requirement. And so we had to kind of remove the preschool age group out of the, underneath Magic Adventures budget code and switch that over. So I worked with my team. Stephanie has great ideas and she can make logos like no other. So she created a few different ones for us and we came up with little adventures for the preschool age. I think that's helped I think that's helped parents be able to register and understand the registration process a little bit more because there's, there's only before and after-school when, when parents are registering for K through fifth during the school year. And for preschool, there's before-school, AM wraparound, full-day, PM wraparound, and after-school. So there's a lot of options for them. And now that it's kind of dialed into just one Little Adventures preschool, it has, it has helped my life. And then I also just wanted to highlight our, the staff welcome-back event. Mr. Olson called me about a week before the event and said, "Do you think you can sneak in 150 kids into the high school in the back auditorium?" And I'm like, "Huh, we can try. We take three buses everywhere we go, so I don't think it's that big of a deal to walk over." So Ryan laughs at me, but I'm like holding up that curtain, trying to get every kid out on the stage. I think the most impactful part of that day was the teachers and the staff remembering why we do what we do. But also, when the staff then stood up and applauded the kids, it was like, "This is so cool. This is so impactful." So, and I had a couple of people afterwards just tell me that they cried, and they were like all emotional about it. So I just wanted to highlight that today as well. Thanks for your time. Here is Stephanie.
Hello. So I do have a summer recap here for what was happening with enrichment classes. Our summer went really well. We had 87 youth enrichment classes that we offered, both in-person and online. We got 464 participants with 337 of them being unique. I did start partnering with Big Lake and Becker on some of our classes, mostly in like STEM and art classes. And that really helps out with participation rates and everything. We get more people in the door. We do host classes both at their sites and here in Monticello. So that's kind of helpful. As far as adult enrichment goes, we had 56 courses this summer. And we did have in-person and online courses, and we had about 160 participants in that. This summer, we had some really great trips. I took a group to Stillwater for a riverboat cruise, lunch and browsing, and we had 46 adult participants for that one. And then in July, we went to the Chateau St. Croix Winery for a tour and lunch there in downtown Stillwater and at the Lowell Inn. They love that. Really popular trip. But in September was my biggest trip that I ever took. And I ended up getting 91 people registered for a trip to Trigo, Wisconsin, to take a train trip. So that was above and beyond what I've ever experienced before. It was super fun. I did have help. We took two large, extra-large coach buses, and we got to eat in the dining cars on the train. And then we got to stop at the Burnett Dairy Co-op on the way back and buy cheese. And it was super fun. I partner with St. Michael, Albertville, Big Lake, Maple Lake, Annadale, and Becker for all of my trips. I plan them all using a travel company, Local. And so I put them all together, and then I just send out the trips to the other community ed sites, and they, they just put it on their websites and do their own registrations. And it really helps to boost participation for those trips. It's a really fun part of my job that I really love, connecting with all those community members. They just, you know, I know them all by name, they know me by name. I see them in the grocery store, and they give me hugs, and it's really, it's a really fun part of my job. As far as marketing, this October, I did an extra mailing. It was an oversized postcard that went out on the 7th to all Monticello residents within our school district boundaries. I hope you guys got some that live here. The postcard featured just some of our other classes that are coming up this fall that I wanted to boost enrollment on. But I also took advantage of a part of it to put the levy information on that postcard as well. And then right now, I'm in planning for our winter-spring program. So falls, classes are going well. And our next catalog will come out in, right before the holidays, and all the classes will be online December 15th, available for registration. So, we're ready.
Hi. So I was only here for August, so just a little bit for you. Summer/fall, we offered 60 youth courses, 2,065 users, 1,221 of those users being unique. This fall, middle school activities all came under the community ed umbrella. That started last year, and this year, they're all under community ed. So so far, we've had 213 users, 190 of those being unique. And that was as of 10/7, so those numbers have gone up since then. And then our adult recreation for summer/fall, we had 10 courses, 488 users with 400 being And then our facilities, facility rentals for the physical years of '25, we had over 9,700 facility use hours for non-school-related events. 100 different facility users, 74 in-district and 26 out-of-district. And then the facilities were used 335 days.
I have a question for you real quick, Parker.
Yeah.
Number one, I want to say thank you because I know he volunteered to help coach a volleyball group that didn't have a coach. And so I guess my question is for you, now that we've transferred a lot of the activities for middle school over to community education for registration, are you having difficulty finding coaches? We're super grateful for you, but there's only one of you.
Yeah. Volleyball is definitely a challenge. Thinking some of that, though, was just me being new, not knowing exactly who to reach out to, being as we did have some coaches move on. With girls' basketball coming up, I had four coaches apply. Right now, I only need one, but I did hire a second one on condition. So really hoping we get enough students to be able to have that second coach, because she does have a lot of experience. So volleyball is tough, but boys' and girls' basketball is looking really promising.
Okay, good. And you got some maybe names for next year already, starting to collect some of those?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
I do have to comment on that, too, as a kind of a good segue. I did ask Parker recently what his favorite part of his job, because it was new, and I wanted to get a, a take on that. And he actually said coaching volleyball. So it's pretty neat to hear that, even though it was a burden to take on a responsibility that you didn't foresee happening. He took it with such grace and, and really gave the kids an awesome experience. I got to watch one game, and it was awesome.
I can tell you, the athletes love him as a coach. So I ran into them, and they were like, "Coach, coach." So, yeah, it's great.
I get to talk about ABE. Julia's on vacation today. So the biggest changes from the spring last time, starting July 1st, we added our 17th school district. Malaca joined our consortium. We had started doing programming at the Malacs County Jail a couple of years ago because they were not getting any services. And then Malac, Malaca was also not getting any services, say, some from St. Cloud. So they joined our consortium starting this summer because consortium, school districts can change consortiums, put a request in by the end of January to MDE, and then they can move on to a new consortium if they choose to. So you can come or go throughout that timeframe. So you can see all the sites up there. So Malaca's the only new one we have. Just a couple of keynotes for students. Students must be 17 years old to be in an adult basic ed program, and they can't be also enrolled in high school at the same time. So we can't compete with high school. Obviously, we, the state moved that up several years ago from 16 to 17. Because we do get parents that do ask, and they do have to hit the criteria to be in adult basic ed and have dropped out of high school. It is part of the state system, so we have a site. It's, ABE is across the whole state, kind of no different than the rest of the school system. Just some reminders of how we, we do programming from May 1st through April 30th, and then we do our fiscal, our fiscal year is still July 1st through June 30th every year. And Julia is our new manager, who replaced Jill, starting into January this year. Some highlights from the summertime, we tried a GD Express course. So we had five attendees, two graduates. So they would come in for a week, study in the morning, take a test in the afternoon, study for another subject, get their test done. So like you kind of, it's like a boot camp, just get them in and out, get their GEDs best they can. We started also offering online classes, as we've been pushing this for years and finally ha, and finally have a manager that's really like, yes, we can do this. Getting this, meeting the adult learners where they're at, so it's always in-person classes in for every adult learner. So getting them in-person, but then getting them into an op, into a classroom that fits their needs. We had, had 81 testers this year, or 236 testers, 47 diplomas out of our consortium. We also had the Teacher of the Year by Literacy Action Network, Teresa Fisher, who's our teacher at Buffalo site. And we had over 1,890 students and over 45,000 contact hours. Community ed, ABE is funded half on contact hours, so it's very important that we have students in the classroom. And we started also promoting our statewide courses to get some other certifications for our, for our students. And Eric and Casey also went to graduation night, which is very powerful to see adult learners making impacts on their lives and what they can do and progress from getting their citizenship to a driver's license, to getting their GEDs so they can go to college or, you know, learn English to better support their family. And on your calendar, we have graduation again on June 10th in Buffalo. All right, Ryan?
All right. Good evening, everyone. So some of the highlights here for the fine arts programming. The course of the summer saw a return of a few different courses to include the Storybook Theater, the, the Community Strings Orchestra Concert, and the Community Strings Jazz Concert. All of those yielded a high turnout from both the youth and adult enrollment. And then we also introduced weekly theater workshops. And what these workshops is, is a sort of an all-encompassing, various aspects of theater. They're covered on a week-by-week basis. This could be ranging from acting to sound design, light design, any sort of stage combat, costuming, really anything that goes into theater that I have learned through my time in the field, I've been able to bring right over to the high school. That's where we do it at. And those courses have been open to the public, and we saw a, another high turnout again from both youth and adult there. And I am confident that as that program comes back next year, we will even get a higher number. So that's been a lot of fun to work with that. We have also employed a number of new personnel to serve as our event hosts for, for all of our after-school programming. You may have seen them at a few events. They're wearing their highly fashionable, bright neon-green construction shirts. So we brought them on to sort of ensure that the highest level of customer service is being provided to all of our renters. And thus far, throughout the school year, I've heard nothing but good things about both their hospitality and the enthusiasm that they bring to all these events that they're working on. We've incorporated a, a number of numerous fundraising events here to try and raise some money for the theater program. We have a bunch of our theater students working. The Haunted Acres, that's over in Big Lake right now. We are currently trying to partner with one of the local gyms for a Day of the Deadlift event. That should be pretty fun. And then we're also bagging groceries at the local Cub there. So that's been off to a great start. On top of that, we have submitted a few grant requests through the American Theater Wing and the Andrew Lloyd Webber Foundation for some auditorium upgrades for both here, at the middle school, and over at the high school. So stay tuned for that. If we get approval, fingers crossed. And then noted below is just some of the upcoming events and productions that we have to include our high school and our middle school musicals, as well as a few theater productions that we are renting out to some of the local theater groups. So pending any questions, that's all we got going on for fine arts. Thank you.
All right. One of the big highlights of the summertime, as you know, is swimming lessons. You can see we had over 283 different swimming lesson sections in our eight-lane pool. So let's see, it's very, very busy over the 10 weeks of the summertime. We had 1,191 registrations, and almost 900 different students took swimming lessons. And we offer a variety of, during the school year, we offer private swimming lessons. As you know, our pool is very busy, Monday through Friday, with swim team and swim club. So we do pool and pizza, private lessons on the weekends, and we keep getting more and more requests for private pool parties, birthday parties. I just got one today. And I just want to thank our staff. Now, we had two new coordinators this summer, Kate Hanson and Caitlin Hagley, and they did a great job of transitioning over and running a smooth, excellent program for the summertime and continuing the tradition that we have set for many, many years with Monticello swimming lessons. Little bit about Northwest Talent Academy. Janine and Leanne will probably be here at a different point, but just a little high overview. This was our seventh summer, and our largest summer, and we ran the shortest amount of time. So we had 34, 34 different courses. We only had seven cancellations out of our 58 sections. That's our least cancellation rate. And we ran only three weeks, so we just ran in June. We're doing the same thing again this summer. Parents asked for more, but the numbers dictate that they liked having it shorter amount of time, and we had higher participation count. So, which is great for our students. And it keeps getting bigger and bigger every year because the students love it. And Leanne and Janine do a great job. With that, do we have any questions for anybody?
On the Northwest Talent Academy, you said that's ran in June. Would it be an opportunity to run it again in August or July? Run it more than once or no?
The year before, we've run two and two, but our June numbers have always been much higher.
Okay.
Just so like, we're trying, we're exploring a different option to run some programming in July potentially, that could serve a larger variety of students and maybe incorporate some of the instructors that we do. But most of our instructors are teachers, so they do kind of like, it's, they feel good. And then it's kind of like, even their proposal's kind of weaned off because they want some summer vacation as well, too.
That was a sad call, what Jeremiah said, but Sarah Walk is working with Steph, Andrea, and Jen to make sure that we look at what programming is going on district-wide, and how could we build our program to have some tendencies like NWTA, so that more of that, that curiosity and that hands-on type of feel to every program that we run. So there, there will be some new and improved summer opportunities for kids.
Because this kind of runs with, conjuring with summer school, too. So we're just trying to figure out how to engage more students, right? Because you're, you know, you have price, you got transportation, you know, what, and what people want. Because you have, as you can see through the numbers, like you have a lot, much higher participation in recreation than you do in enrichment. So it's always finding that balance of having what's the right time, what families want, what they need, how many vacations are they going on, coming and going. Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you so much for coming and presenting. We appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Great presentation tonight. It's fun to see you guys and all the different new things that you're offering. It's very noticeable. Keep it up.
All right, now we'll shift to item number B. We're going to go through our elementary building goal updates with our elementary principals. Let me welcome to the podium Principal Kristen Green, Principal Nicole Corto, Principal Shelley Gilmore, and Assistant Principal Pinewood, Clay Norman.
We're going to start with introductions. Thank you Chair Steven for introducing our group. Good evening Superintendent Olson and Chair Board members. We, school board members. We are excited to present together this year because we've been working so hard to collaborate as an elementary team and make sure we're setting a strong foundation for our earliest learners, especially as they transition from Eastview into the other elementary settings. So we're going to go through the slideshow together, and then we'll open it up for questions at the end.
I'm Shelley Gilmore, principal at Pinewood Elementary.
And Clay Norman, Assistant Principal, Pinewood.
I thought we were skipping introductions. That's why I stepped aside. I'm sorry. We'll get our act together. I'm Kristen Green. I am the principal at Eastview Education Center and our nature base program.
Our district goals are improving pre-K through 12 literacy, and then also district-wide implementation of the vision of a learner. Our elementary schools have been working hard on staff development for our teachers and making sure that our goals and our staff development align with the needs that we
All right. So first and foremost, I'd like to talk to you about the incredible literacy work that's happening from a pre-K5 level at Eastview, Nature Base, and Pinewood and Little Mountain. We are working very hard with our staff to continue enhancing the instruction that is in front of students. So many of our teachers have already completed either letters or Ola, and some of them are finishing that up. Our preschool teachers, all the way through our fifth-grade teachers. And so we've really built a collective efficacy, a collaborative community around how we instruct students in early literacy. All of the instruction that you will see happening in classrooms is strongly based in what they are learning in letters and Ola, that science of reading. And so... And so you will see, prior to a few years ago, when we had all of this great professional development, you saw maybe some different learning styles and different approaches to literacy and even different philosophies of what early learning looked like for young readers. Now, as you walk across buildings, you see common practices, you see explicit instruction happening in a very similar fashion from building to building. That instruction also follows very closely our MTSS framework. So lots of different strategies, but similar across classrooms, differentiating that instruction. And then the decisions that are being made around how we're delivering instruction are based on data-driven information. So we are guiding our tier-one opportunities for kids using data that we're collecting even as young as four years old and using that to guide what their classroom experience looks like and then what they might need as far as additional support.
All right. And then as far as literacy staff development, that looks similar between our buildings as well. As Kristen said, we have most of our staff completed in the red act training and the rest of them finishing up this year. This includes our educational support specialists as well, which is really exciting. So now we're really taking that knowledge and taking the time to build upon it and make sure that we are implementing it with fidelity. Our reading coaches, which have been key to our literacy instruction, continue to do coaching observation and coaching cycles within our building to continue to strengthen our teachers across the district. We continue to work through our PLCs and as Kristen said, really dive into the data and make sure that we're making the best decisions with the data we have in front of us. And then we continue, as the middle school had talked about, using that instructional framework to make sure that we have really good, strong teaching practices in place all across the board.
All right. So our first goal was around literacy, pre-K through five literacy. And our second goal is around our vision of a learner goals. So what does that look like in elementary buildings when you are building students who are effective communicators, resilient learners, critical thinkers, and persons of integrity? An example that I can give at Eastview is around effective communicators and what does that mean for us? We're tackling that vision of a learner attribute, both on the side of the adults as well as on the side of the children. And so the adults are doing the modeling. How are we talking to students? How are we talking to each other about students when we're sharing data, when we're planning for kids? And then how are we modeling for students, how to use their voice, how to be an effective communicator and communicate their needs, their misunderstandings, the questions they may still have in their learning, how to speak up and be an advocate for your learning. Resilient learner, you'll hear that in all of our buildings. You'll hear students saying to, to each other, "Well, if you want to be a resilient learner, you gotta keep going. Don't give up." And reminding each other, they know that word resiliency means it might be hard, but I know what to do. I know who to ask because I'm an effective communicator. I know how to advocate for my needs. All of the work we're doing, both in literacy, mathematics, science, social studies, is giving kids opportunities to be critical thinkers. So we are not just spitting information at them and hoping it sinks in. We're giving them opportunities to collaborate, to turn and talk, to pair up with partners in their classroom, to do their learning activities while also still expecting them to be independent, critical thinkers, and take in knowledge and information on their own. And then another thing you will hear throughout, throughout our buildings is integrity, doing the right thing. Even if a teacher is not asking you to, how do you step up as a person of integrity even when no one's looking? And what does that look like? What does that look like on the playground? What does that look like on the bus? And so all of these are really truly embedded as elementary teachers. This is our jam. This is what we do, trying to build people in our community who exhibit all of these attributes.
The staff development around the vision of a learner is, we have a a lot of different ways that we're doing this. So what Kristen was just talking about with the vision of the learner, our character-strong curriculum that each child gets throughout the elementary experience focuses on how to be respectful, responsible, how to persevere, how to have empathy, how to think creatively. So throughout our days, not only are we teaching content, but also working on those important attributes. One thing that our staff in, at Little Mountain and at Pinewood work on is something that's called the Catalyst Approach. And Clay's going to talk a little bit about that.
Good evening. So the Catalyst Approach is something that we've spent a couple of years on now, and that training revolves around teachers setting up consistent practices for students to come into and know what to expect every day. That allows students to be a little more independent or start to build that independence even at our younger age. It also allows them to learn how to problem solve. It allows the teacher more time to interact with kids because you've been in an elementary classroom, you know that often what you experience is kids are asking hundreds of questions. And so to try, that takes a lot of energy and a lot of time. And so trying to set up consistent practices where kids feel safe to feel like they know what they're doing in the classroom and not relying on the adult to always take care of those little things helps them be successful and to grow.
We are also using a program called Ukero this year. Ukero is a program that is brain-based. So it talks about how the brain responds when there is a trigger. So we're being more curious about behaviors and thinking about the why, because behavior, the why, why behaviors are happening. So understanding that it's a, it's a brain response, the way that the neural pathways are developed might be different than we're expecting and what we can do to help reroute those pathways. Once a month, our teachers get together in behavior PLCs and they learn about the brain and how to respond to students that may be dysregulated because of one thing or another. All of these things are put together along with the academics to ensure that every student, every day, no matter what school you go to for an elementary experience, that student is getting the same thing. So when they go to the middle school and the high school, they've got that strong foundation.
And we have a lot of different systems and structures in place. And of course, you've heard us say the big umbrella is our MTSS structure. And so everything that we do is falling under that. We're making sure that we're meeting all of the different tiers of instruction. And these are some of the ways that we do that. So we're consistently meeting with our instructional leadership teams to make important instructional decisions within the building. Our behavior and academic study teams look really closely again at data and make sure that we're getting students what they need. And then our PLCs go through a lot of different cycles around literacy, behavior, and math to just make sure that our instructional approaches are in place to best meet again all tiers of instruction within our buildings.
So we've talked about how we're supporting literacy, how we're supporting academics. We're also talking about how we're supporting students to become happy, healthy, resilient learners, critical thinkers. We also know that, that you have a packet of data and we do have time to address some questions that you have with that. And we also want you to know that we look forward to doing a deeper dive with you all on the data in a future work session.
You opening up to us now for questions on the data?
You bet.
Okay, great. Board members, as you can see, we have two data charts that were presented to us on testing scores. Have you guys had a chance to review all of this data now? And can you just give us a brief overview of it quick before we spring questions?
So as we reviewed the data together as a team, one thing that immediately jumped out at us was our pride in, if you look at a particular class of students as they move through the years, you are seeing some nice increases in student performance. And so as we have strengthened and enhanced some of the teaching strategies and made things more consistent across spaces, you can see some increases. So the kiddos that were in kindergarten in 21, 22, increasing over their course of those few years and attributing that to the hard work of teachers, really bringing practices into their spaces. So that was a celebration that we noted when we looked at the data.
We also noted that there's areas that are in need of improvement. For example, we look at some of our math scores and we have new, new standards in math. And the new standards are, we know that we need to focus on more in how the brain learns how to do math. So we have just done a really deep dive in the science of reading. Now we're going to be diving into the science of math, really working on having students understand what the concepts are rather than being able to memorize and just do facts, have an understanding of what does three times three really mean and how does that work instead of just nine? Another thing with math is that we have been working with our current curriculum for quite a long time. And we're going to be starting piloting and looking towards an adoption process next year. So, so we know that with our new standards that we need to do some things differently. We need to make sure that we fully understand how kids learn how to do math and focus on, on those big concepts.
As we've looked at reports for the last few years, usually there's a state percentage next to the 882 percentage. We see that over here on the MCAs. What would you say is the purpose or the advantage of looking at the state scores?
Overall, it gives us a chance to celebrate because on average, we are higher than the state. It doesn't point out, I mean, we obviously still have a lot of work to do, but I do think that helps us see that we've seen some decreases in scores, but the state overall has seen some decreases too. Again, not that we don't have work to do, but it is a point of celebration at times for us because our averages do seem to be higher than the state in most areas.
I have a question on the Fast Bridge. Maybe you can explain if you want to pull that back up. Zoom in a little bit. So I can see the, the grades as I move through are improving, but it looks like year over year, there is some drop. So if I just pick one randomly, second grade, for example, that grade was at 61, then 58, then 54, then 50. Grade three was 73, then 65, then 60, 61. Am I reading that correctly? And if I am, what do you think is the largest contributor to that trend?
That's a, a great question. And part of it is looking at cohort data. So cohorts come in, you know, kids have different things that are happening in their lives, you know, if you look at, you know, adults and generations. So part of that is, is just the differences in cohorts. It is something that when we look at it, that's why it's really good to look at the data both ways when we're looking at data longitudinally. So we're, you know, able to take a look and see our students making progress from year to year. It, we're looking at it, we're looking at it both ways. We're taking a look at, you know, what is happening with second grade and then also really digging into the data and seeing, is it our foundational skills? Is it comprehension? What is it exactly? And then we're able to put supports in place to help address that.
Yeah. So I mean, year over year, you're making strides, but it seems like each year we're starting back further and further than the starting block. So I just want to make sure we understand here when we dig into a little bit further that we understand what's, what do we think is driving that? And what is the, how do we, we help rectify that is all.
I think one of the factors that you don't see up here is usually the Fast Bridge is given with, within the first two or three weeks of school. And so there is definitely a summer learning loss too. So that is a part of it. That's, although you're looking at spring data, sorry, that wouldn't make sense then. But we do, we do often start again a little bit behind in the fall and have work to make up. I do want to throw it there. We don't like to blame COVID, but some of our early learners, that second grade cohort going through would have missed a lot of in-person learning around that same time if I'm looking at the dates correctly.
Right. And in addition to that, it's, a lot of their language development was happening when people were wearing masks. And a big part of comprehension is not just, you know, not just reading comprehension, but it's also that language comprehension as well. So there are some pieces that we're continuing to work through.
Yeah, me, I think a positive, the part of it too is like, when you look at fifth grade, it seems like they're catching up by the time they're in fifth grade, but is there anything we can do as an opportunity to help springboard earlier? So those numbers, by the time they get to fifth grade, we're, we're a little bit higher is all.
And I think in hope that that's what a lot of the plans that we talked about in our staff development are really targeted towards. And so it is ensuring that whatever, whatever elementary you're at, you're getting the same experiences with our functional phonics resource, functional morphology, amplify, building oral language in collaboration with comprehension. Those are all some things that have really been enhanced in the last few years that I don't think we did as well a handful of years ago for kids. And so now the explicitness of instruction, the really purposeful looking at data, and each week we have an assessment tracker where we can see, oh, this was the skill this week and I see a dip in that. What are my interventions and resources to give that extra scoop of instruction? And so I do hope you will continue to see that we are filling those holes that maybe we didn't fill as well in previous years because now we know better and we're doing better, I think, for kids.
Is there more support that you guys need from the board to, to assist in this at all? I mean, we're here to help. We just want to.
There's a loaded question. It's, we have really great people in front of kids and the willingness of our staff to engage with reading coaches. So having that opportunity and that is something that Monticello has moved forward, allowing reading coaches to come in and support teachers and noticing things about kids that when you're in the front of the room instructing, you might miss something. And so how do we not miss those things with kids? So I do think the systems of support that we've built in this community are really, really to an advantage for our students. And, and not everywhere has that. So we, that is something that we are truly grateful for, is those interventionists and those reading coaches.
I'd just like to draw attention to, this is the first time that we've done it all elementary. And so through the Director of Teaching and Learning and work of our principals and making sure that all that work gets all the way through the system. The goals are worked on and true collective efficacy is going to happen because we're going to be talking about it throughout the system. Even bringing it back to the board level to have those granular data dives, both at a little, you know, a little bit here at the meetings, but then also having them scheduled throughout the year is going to be something that becomes part of our vocabulary in the district, which we're all really excited and proud of. So I love the conversation and the knowledge that we're seeing from both, both parties here.
Can you speak just to here more on the reading coaches? Is that something, you said that's something new that we've incorporated. Is that volunteers? Is that grant money? Where, where do our reading coaches stem from?
Our reading coaches fall under the ANI grant. And that was, we put that into place three school years ago. So they have been able to get into every elementary classroom in some capacity to provide coaching. You know, some of them have branched out and started working with special ed as well. So they're a huge impact on making sure that we have consistent, great reading instruction happening. It would be lovely someday to have math coaches as well, especially as we roll out a new curriculum. That's something the board might be able to help with, but we're just so thankful to have those people there. We come into the classroom in a much different way. We can help coach and things too, but that's their dedicated time, their full-time position.
And that's achievement integration money. That is not specifically a grant, but it's just programming and funding that we qualify for as a district from the state. Just wanted to clarify. Okay. What other questions do we have? Nothing? All right. Well, thank you and great job presenting. We, we like the unified approach. We, we like the unified approach. All right, now we'll move to item number nine on our agenda, Safe and Healthy Culture. And I'd like to welcome up to the podium our Activities Director Gary Revning to go over a resolution of Governing Board Supporting Form A application for the state.
Good evening. Chair Seben, Monticello School Board, Superintendent Olson. I'm here seeking school board approval for two grants from the Minnesota State High School League. These are annual grants we've applied for every year. The first one is the Form A Grant. And the money that comes in from the foundation is from the sales tax at all the state tournament events. And Monticello, we're fortunate to host state soccer. We're hosting state soccer on Wednesday and Thursday, two games each night in our stadium this week. And then we're going to host state football on Saturday, November 8th. So we're very fortunate, like I said, to be able to host that. The sales tax from those tickets goes into the foundation, and that money is split equally between all the schools that apply for it. Not every school does. We always do here in Monticello. So Form A is to offset the students that qualify for free and reduce lunch to give you some money back to the school district. And in the Monticello district, it goes back into our general fund. That's Form A. Form B is for something with safety. In the last three years, we've applied and received the grant for a new AED. And I was trying to think this year, where would we possibly put another AED if we received the grant? And I just found out last week that two of them did not realize this happened, but their lifespan has expired and they need to be replaced. One is in the fieldhouse at the high school, and the other one is the first portable one we received about 10 years ago. So they do expire. So we will try to, hopefully we'll get this grant this year, and we'll replace both of them. So I'm seeking approximately $3,000 in Form B for two new AEDs.
Awesome. Any questions, board members? This is an action item.
Two separate.
Well, Form A, whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas the Governing Board of District 882 recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities, and whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools and recognizing, promoting, funding extracurricular participation by high school students and the athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, it be resolved that the Governing Body, the Governing Board of District 882 supports the school application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees.
Second.
Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero, and now on to Form B.
Before we go on to Form B, I just want to applaud our board for majority participation. We're talking about safety in athletics. And there was a letter provided by a fellow school board member in the state that was sent around to board members throughout the state asking for our signature to support Title IX compliance. And the letter goes to Attorney General Keith Ellison. I don't know what the status is right now of that, but appreciate that we stood up for our girl sports who are doing very well. And hopefully, we can see some compliance with Title IX to provide safety for girl sports. Thank you.
Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas the Governing Board of District 882 recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities, and whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools to provide seminars, training opportunities, or support for specific school functions for students, faculty members, officials, and others who are involved in athletic and finance programs. Therefore, it be resolved that the Governing Board of District 882 supports the school's application to the Minnesota High School League Foundation for a Form B grant.
Seconded.
By Jeff Hegley, seconded by Mary Bartel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
All right, now we will move on to Item B, which is a calendar change for Election Day for 20... Is it supposed to say 2026, I think? Calendar. And I'm going to pass it over to Superintendent Eric Olson.
All right, so, nope, this is for this Election Day. So as you were making notice of though, I will be coming with the calendar in November for the 25, 26 school year. But this one is just a slight change. Worked with high school administration. And we feel it's important to keep up what we've been doing the last two elections. And over the last two elections, we have either not had school at the high school because our high school is a voting precinct, or we have had a online digital at-home learning day. So we'd like to keep up that tradition. And so it's just a little tweak of the calendar where on November 4th, our high school students would have a digital at-home learning day. Our staff are well first in being able to do this for inclement weather. And Principal Hansen has been working with the staff just to make sure that they're ready if this goes through here tonight. So I'm proposing today that we tweak the November 4th calendar. As you can see, there's a new color on the calendar. And that purple represents high school-only at-home digital learning day for November 4th. That just gives our, our public the opportunity to vote in a place that's just for voting. And it gives our students an opportunity to be with, with their teachers. And it might be in a different format than normal, but it is still a format that provides that separation.
All right, board, any questions? Second. Moved by Jeff Hegley, seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. On to Item C, which is our second reading of policy. Let me welcome to the podium Director of Human Resources, Rob Daniker.
Thank you, Chair Seben, members of the board, Superintendent Olson. So I'm here tonight with the second read of four policies for adoption. We had five policies come to our first read this month, and we did Table 1 and send it back to the committee for further consideration in November. So we'll see that one back in front of the full board at that time. But the four in front of us tonight start with Policy 303, which is Superintendent Selection, timely given the agenda for the work session this evening. The purpose of this policy is to convey to the school community that the authority to select and employ a superintendent is vested in the school board. There are no recommended changes to this policy, but based on our past practice, we do bring forward those policies that are not subject to revision to be part of our action agenda as well. But any questions on 303? Moving forward to 607, this is the Organization of Grade Levels. The purpose of this policy is to address the grade level organization of schools within the school district. This is not currently a policy in place for Monticello. And it's, we're drawing from the MSBA model language for this policy and the fact that three Minnesota statutes refer to elements of this policy. So I thought it was fruitful to bring it forward for adoption. And I'll accept any questions on 607. All right, moving forward to 621, Literacy in the Read Act. The purpose of this policy aligns with the Minnesota law established in the Read Act and on other topics related to reading. This came forward for review due to legislative change during the 25 legislative session. There were significant amendments made to the statute that guides the Read Act. And then again, its impact on Policy 621. So some revisions in terms of timeline dates, dual-language immersion programs, alignment in TSS, as we heard from our elementary principals, and against more changes regarding timeline for implementation and training. Any questions on 621? Okay. And last, but certainly not least, Policy 704, Development and Maintenance of an Inventory of Fixed Assets and a Fixed Asset Accounting System. The purpose of this policy is to provide for the development, maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets of the school district and the establishment and maintenance of a fixed asset accounting program. And so at the recommendation of our Director of Business Services, along with our auditors, we're recommending some updates to this section. And first and foremost, to bring it into compliance with current auditing standards. And so we established that new capitalization level of $5,000, total threshold being $25,000. We adjusted the amounts on capitalization and depreciation. And we updated also the legal references and cross-references to other MSBA policies. Any questions on 704? All right, Chair Seben, so these are action items for tonight for four policies for this month.
Recommend these policies be approved as read and presented and updated.
Moved by Mary Bartel, seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Thank you, Director Daniker. All right, and that brings us to adjournment at 7:13 PM. We will be following this meeting with a work session. Take a five-minute break before we get started on that. And our next upcoming school board meeting will be at 5:00 PM on Monday, November 3rd. Thank you for joining us.